All right, Sycamore City Council, first meeting of the year. Council expected tonight to set the millidrate. I don't have an agenda to show you, sorry about that. But we'll get started in just a moment here.
Just keep going ahead.
And the hush fell over the room.
We'll just wait for you to make a speech.
I'd like to thank the Academy.
It's too soon, the Golden Lows just happened.
If you're waiting for Galt Brown to make his speech, you don't wait long.
Damn. Ladies and gentlemen, the fourth estate. The fourth estate, the first in her actions.
They might be hoping the Academy won't just replace this year's California burn.
Man, I hadn't followed it much today, but when I went to bed last night, too.
They probably got any better today.
My cousin Pam, she lives out there in Whittier. You know, they ain't been in danger yet, but her daughter is married to a fireman that's out there. And their stuff is fifteen miles, about fifteen miles from their house.
Yeah, I got some friends in Temple City.
If it was running, wind blowing a hundred miles an hour, how long do you think it'd take to burn fifteen miles?
Not very long.
And I'm like, you're no good doggone well, go get your daughter.
Yeah, but what I want.
Tell her and her husband to come live with y'all before y'all leave, because y'all in a safer spot.
Sixty miles an hour is a mile a minute. Yeah, I put that in context.
What I was watching on the news last night was the fact that they, a lot of these places had zero access to water.
Right, because they did not refill the water tanks. There's no water in the hydrant system.
I know.
And here in Bass, cut over seventeen million dollars from the LA Fire Department's budget.
Well, and I will say this, and this is just me, I view, and I don't live out there, but I've known people that live
Yep.
in the country part of California a long time. That is, in every place that's forward to management, it's pretty much.
Here's the thing, here's the thing, you got San Fernando Valley, and you got onshore wind. They have had small there since the Los Angeles nation back in the seventeen hundreds. They knew about the air quality, they know about small. It is a natural component of the geography. But the environmental lobby has stopped them from having prevented and preemptive control burners. The entirety of my adult life.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, guess what? Mother Nature is performing a control burn. What in the ding dong doodle are you doing here today?
We got so cold, we got low on the way in.
Taxpayers is gonna see how the meeting is going.
Oh, Lord. The thing about out there, you know, they got three big fires going at one time. One on the east coast, one in central, and then one on the west. So. But they're saying they had a wind theme, they believe it.
No, sir, they're not.
They'll dry you out in a hot year.
And it's so dry.
I haven't killed any, if it's not for lack of opportunity, I just haven't been able to shoot one. Now, if I'd had a wall hanger come out, yeah, he'd come home with it.
He'd come on down.
Yeah, but the little ones, I said, y'all need to get bigger.
A friend of mine took me, and he burned one, took it out, and he walked out.
If I could come out on me, he'd be dead. I didn't get one shoot.
Y'all would, let's call this meeting to order. Fred, how about leading us in order of prayer?
My Lord, we thank you again for the joy and the privilege of coming together to work for our community. We ask that you would strengthen us, give us clarity of mind, and let us speak and act in such a way that we uphold the integrity with this city's urge. We ask that all that we do would be glorified in you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Y'all would, let's rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item three, discuss and vote on to approve agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as stated.
Second.
All in favor, so carry. Item four, discuss and vote to approve minutes.
Move to approve the minutes as stated.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, so carry. Item five, we will not be in any executive session. Item six, discuss and vote on suggested water rate increase. And I'm gonna let Sean come up and explain to y'all exactly what this is all about. And we, this was suggested by someone. He can explain better in detail than I can.
We're applying, as our engineer, Stacy, told us, we were, we had talked him about, applying for the GFLON. Well, to get the GFLON, our water rates has to meet a certain amount to secure the loan. So, now I've talked with Rural Water and Georgia Rural Water, and they'll be glad to come in and help us do a rate study to see what we need to, what we need to raise our rates to make this project go through.
Any questions, council?
To be clear, are they telling us to increase our rates so that we'll be able to service the GFLON?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's a standard procedure.
It's standard procedure. We've had it do it before, and the last time we raised rates on the water or had a rate study was, I think, 2011.
How much do you think we're going to?
I don't foresee a lot, but I couldn't say until we start looking at some numbers.
We're gonna be borrowing, what, six hundred thousand dollars?
At least, yes.
We looking at ten percent increase?
I don't know if it'll be that much. Per person, you know, but it could be.
Okay. Because ten percent on mine would be about five dollars and twenty cents.
I can't give a definite number, but I don't think it would be no more than that.
Okay.
Until we get Rural Water in here, then we'll do a rate study and see what, see what the actual numbers would be.
So, we don't know how much of an increase we actually have to have at this moment?
Right, we don't know how much we have to have right at this moment.
So, we're voting on basically allowing the people to come in and do the study?
Yeah.
Well, we already voted on that last, last month. We'll have to go ahead and get it underway.
Yeah, but we can't vote on rate increase till we know what it is.
Right.
We're not going to, we will take it, we ain't voting on an increase yet. You need to, you're right, we need to know what increase would possibly be.
And I talked with somebody with GFA today, and they had some changes up there. And one we've been working with ain't there no more, and it's gonna postpone us a little bit further in this project anyway, so it's not gonna.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at?
Looking at four or five months before it gets through. And this is gonna go into GFA's May meeting, so we just need to have our rate study done and all the numbers in before.
Last time a price increase came up was, correct me if I'm wrong, 2011 or what?
Yeah, yeah, 2011 was last rate increase.
All right.
So, we're fourteen years without a rate increase?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So, more than likely, even if it does increase, it won't be until the next fiscal year?
Um, probably, yeah, it probably would be able to take effect in the next fiscal year.
So, what really needs to do is?
Yeah.
If they come up with a number in May, we can put it on.
Yeah, I'm sure. Yeah.
Your budget for it.
Right.
Yeah.
We can get it all worked into budget, and we'll know more after we get the study done as well.
Unless Councilman Coke, you wanna amend the budget?
I ain't about to amend it.
He trying to get a war started in there.
Who, me?
Yeah, you.
Ah, he just trying to heat up the room. There you go.
I just wanna know when we got a contract for the statue for Woodruff Park.
Let me make myself perfectly clear for the last time, we are not gonna have a statue. And I need to be clear on that.
We're clear, that makes a lot of sense.
Not even the bus, you know, it's all, gotta have that anyway.
You got a pillar of salt?
Y'all are out of order. Discuss and vote on meal rate. I have been watching what's going on. There's gonna be a slight increase, or I say it's gonna be slight, I can't, can't actually say that for sure, on the Board of Education, from what I see. Now, on the city of Ashburn, from what I'm reading, they went down taxes, of course. City of Ashburn does not affect cities of some sort, they don't pay Ashburn tax. The county, if I am correct, being correct me if I'm not, they held theirs the same. Am I right?
The amount to be collected is the same, the mileage went down.
The mileage went down.
But they will collect the same amount of tax dollars.
Yeah.
How's that work?
Because of assessed value.
Math is evil.
Tip.
Math is evil, okay. I'll explain it later.
So, I need to know what y'all's feelings are. Has anybody seen the five-year history? I think it's in your packet there. Last page, yeah. Very last page runs from 2019 to 2024.
So, the county lowered their millage rate. How would everybody feel about us lowering our city millage rate to a commensurate degree? First of all, can we afford it? All of the things being eaten?
If we're collecting the same amount of tax dollars, I would see why we would be able to.
Well, it would be.
Inflation, prices have gone up.
It would be, you talking about over a period of two years, you talking about.
Well, we only set the rate every year.
I understand that.
Here's what I suggest.
Okay.
Right now, our taxes are setting at nine point zero mil. My suggestion would be this has not been sent to Atlanta to approve the assessed values, okay? It's still got to be done after everybody sets a millage rate. Let's leave ours at nine point oh for the second. Let's let them send this, assess the values. When he gets back, we can call a call meeting, and we can adjust and lower our millage rate.
I'm agreeable with that.
That would be my suggestion. That way, we see the actual real numbers. And because I'm all about helping the citizens of this town, and I know that y'all are too. And I would like to see the numbers to make sure that we're giving them the best that we can give them.
I think that's true.
I'll go along with that. Could I add a little bit more to that?
If you have something, you got the form.
You know, we have late fees and stuff like that. I think we ought to extend the late fees out to June, you know?
Yeah.
Usually, they give them three months. Most people pay their taxes twice in one year.
Sure.
If you go to the, you know, per, I'd say just do away with late fee, but if you go have late fees, extend them out for six months from the time that we make the decision on what the millage rate is.
I, I.
That way, nobody will get called in and pay some serious fines and stuff.
Let me ask a corollary question. If we don't have tax bills yet, presumably, the late fees do not, do not obtain until a certain period of time, what, ninety days?
Right.
Right.
So, if we ain't got tax bills yet, that late fee threshold is gonna be extended at commensurate rate?
I would say that you can extend that, it's normally ninety days extended out because people are having to pay.
I'm, I have no problem with that, but I don't wanna, I do not wanna get us into a situation where we're not collecting property tax.
I understand that. I, I would say, do away with it.
I understand.
Extend it all out.
Yep.
I will go on record repeating myself once again. I think it is a pathetic situation that the county has put us in the position that we're in now.
You're here?
Because the wire graph, I will say this, had printed in it this last week that property has not been assessed for seventeen years. I disagree with that statement. The reason I disagree with it, my taxes have went up several times over the last seventeen years.
What millage rate am I having? If, if you, if you got a hundred, if you got a building for a hundred thousand dollars, and let's just say millage rate is ten or ten percent, then you gonna pay your ten thousand dollars. Now, if building goes up to a hundred and twenty thousand, then it's gonna be, if you stay at the same, you gonna pay more money, even if you stay at the same rate. When one of them goes up, the other one's gonna go up, the actual money is gonna go up. I don't, I don't, I don't see why.
How can it go up if it ain't been assessed?
That might be true too, but if you had, okay, make it go the other way. If your building's still worth a hundred thousand dollars, and you raise the millage rate up, then your taxes are gonna go up.
If you raise the millage rate, taxes are gonna go up, you're right. But how's the value of your building gonna go up from a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand or whatever?
Because money's worth less.
Can't assess that.
That's inflation number one.
That would be assessing property value.
If the property value stayed the same at a hundred thousand dollars, and it went up from ten mil to eleven, your taxes are gonna go up.
Sure, you're right.
Okay.
You're right.
Okay, now, if you, if your tax, if building stayed, and the building went up to a hundred and twenty, and you left it millage rate at ten, you still gonna pay more taxes. Either one that goes up, it's gonna pay more taxes.
I remember, and I can go back in my records, pull it, but I remember probably six years ago, I had a statement that came in the mail. And my wife had opened it, and she gave it to me, and she said, what does this mean? I looked at it. I said, this means good news that our property is worth more money now. It's worth more money. Assessing value, this is about six years ago. Uh, it's worth more money. Bad news is, our taxes just went up. But it's been since 2017, since the property's been assessed, come on, that ain't.
And it could be that your property was assessed, but the entire county has not been as a, as a total, which I think this is what the state.
Why would, why would I be singled out to just be assessed?
If you had a building permit, perhaps?
Because they don't make a statue of it.
If somebody drove by and saw something new in your yard, I don't know, but I don't want this to turn into a fight with
No, 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 it's not going to.
With the county or anything else, because I think, you know, we can look around and see a lot of our neighbors in the state of Georgia that are dealing with the same issue because.
Yeah, but they got their tax bill just on time.
We can also sit there and say, we could also blame and say, well, if they had done it earlier, then our taxes would have prematurely gone up if they had reassessed it two years ago versus now.
The point is, they held the assessment till after a primary election, which has put our citizens and every citizen in this county in a precarious position because now they won't get a tax bill until probably February, sometime in February. And then they're gonna have maybe April to pay it. Then, they gonna get another tax bill that they gotta pay in November. To me, I'm sorry, it, I know you can argue this either way, but to me, it looks like double taxation. I'm sorry, that's the way I look at it.
Well, did you pay it, did you pay your taxes in twenty twenty?
I ain't.
If you're looking, if you're looking at it for double taxation.
I haven't gotten a tax bill in twenty twenty.
Exactly, so when you get it, you gonna know that.
It's twenty twenty-five, this ain't twenty twenty-four.
You're gonna be paid a, like, you're paid twenty twenty-five.
Still getting two bills in the same year.
I, I'm not disagreeing on that, I'm just saying that they, the way it is, is the bill that you paying for the first six months is for the last year, because you didn't pay nothing by December.
But you couldn't.
True, okay, so.
Ca, 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 has happened, and there's nothing we can do about it, except proceed with what we can do.
I mean, you, you can have no fault insurance, and we can claim no fault, or we can try to play a blame game, but either way, until the dog gets straightened out and sent up to Atlanta, you know, we can point fingers all day long, and that ain't gonna accomplish anything.
Well, I'll say, I'll say this, in the banking world, there's something called implied debt, which is if you have a mortgage bill, your, your bill is due regardless of whether or not your mortgage company sends you an invoice or not. In this case, it's like, we've not gotten an invoice for our taxes, but the implied debt is still there. We owe the taxes, we lived on the land, we have the debt that we owe.
And they probably gonna go with what we already last year, what you paid last year and what you paying on that.
Uh, Councilwoman Yawn, I concur with that, except in one detail. The county commissioners hold public office. They have explicit fiduciary responsibilities.
I understand.
They have not met those responsibilities. And if they're failing to do so, they're preventing this council from meeting its fiduciary responsibilities to its constituents. It's things like this that make me drink.
I'm not disagreeing with anything you say.
So, what's council wishes?
We have to, well, we have to table it until we get the information back from Atlanta in any event.
It can't be sent to Atlanta until we set down an actual.
Well, let's, let's stay at nine percent, nine mil.
Okay.
And then we can call a call meeting.
And then we can change.
Okay, I'm, I'll go with that.
Do we have to motion for that?
Okay.
Motion to stay at nine mil.
A motion, a second on the floor, all in favor, unanimously carried.
In relation to that, uh, don't forget that the Board of Education has announced, it was in the wire graphs, that they are going to opt out of the
Home state.
Home state exemption unlimited increase plan, which was voted by over sixty percent of the state of Georgia. And as it is, the Board of Education says, I do not care about the property owners in Tardigris County. I plan, and I would love to see all of us show up at the Board of Education meeting at the Civic Center on the 21st. Then you might remember the time I did not write this down. But be there to protest their anti-citizen action. They decided to opt out, if they opt out, it's out for all of us. In other words, our vote doesn't mean a thing to the Board of Education.
Until you vote differently come November.
Absolutely gonna vote differently in November. A lot of folks don't, don't think that the local elections are important, but as you can see, the Board of Education is one of the very most important elections of all. Everything from property values to our kids' education for the next ten to twenty years.
Didn't you see where Tiff County did the same thing?
Yes, it did.
I thought they, I thought that I read that, that their board, the Tiff County Board opted out as well.
Yeah.
That is, and I can only, I can only assume that the Board's plural of education really don't care about the property owners. Some of us are on fixed income, some of us are on short or broke income. So, that kind of a tax increase hitting twice in one year is devastating. That's like going to the grocery store and buying a dozen eggs when you used to pay fifty cents and a dollar. Now, what is it, six dollars?
Yeah, you ain't gonna get a dozen eggs for a dollar, something like that, you ain't.
I did it one time, you're in Tardigris County.
Okay, all right. Let's move on.
Okay. Okay.
Item eight, discuss and vote on qualifying fees. Uh, we will be having an election coming up this year, I do know that my spot, I think, is up, Fred.
Yeah.
Uh, me, Allen, Sam, Gollis. So, the council qualifying fees will be a hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay.
The mayors will be three hundred and sixty dollars. So I need a motion to adopt that.
Move approved.
I think.
That three percent.
Three percent according to the Georgia. It's a three percent of the, uh, government.
Move approved.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor. Unanimous. Alright, item nine, discuss and vote to rehire department head.
Point of order.
Roy.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, if you could informally poll, or formally poll for that matter, the council about items nine through fourteen.
Yeah.
If we could do them all in one fell swoop, that saves us a lot of time.
We can, let me read them out to the public.
Go right ahead.
Number one, this is discussing vote on each of the department heads. Which includes our, uh. Sean. Ben. Ashley. Bethany. And. Sharon. Did I miss anyone?
No.
No, okay. Uh, discuss and vote to rehire city employees. Discuss and vote to rehire city attorney. Discuss and vote to rehire city solicitor, and discuss and vote to rehire judge. Discuss and vote to rehire public defender.
Move to, move to rehiring Toto.
Sharon. Okay, all in place. Okay, so carry. Ben went, how you are?
What's the, what's the deadline, what's the date deadline on that? Be pretty good.
Oh, that'll, that'll be in August if that comes up.
Deadline for the regular piece or August?
Yeah.
Yep, that's when they usually.
Last week, March, first week of September.
I thought, I thought they were due by the beginning of the fiscal year.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
Okay, item fifteen, that's gonna be department heads, uh, you got anything else, Sean?
No, no.
Sharon.
Sir.
Anything?
Yes.
Okay, Ben.
I did a couple of things, first off, thank you guys for rehiring me. I do appreciate it, um, I don't have anything from the police side, not just, uh. Just the zoning, um, side, we're working on a couple of projects now that I'm not ready to present to the council, but, uh. They've been working on the old denims here, it's gonna be Regular Joe's Depot, um. So we've got everything approved for those guys, they've had commercial contractors come in to bring everything up to code the way they should be, they've done a great job with it. Um, the only change that I've seen with the building thus far is there will not be a kitchen as there was in the past. Think their plans are to serve pizza kinda like the other store here, but they said they're not planning on putting in, putting in a kitchen, um. Other than that, there's, you guys have ridden around the city, there's been a couple of lots that have been surveyeded as of late, nothing's changed, they're just, uh, up for sale and. You know, had to be resurveyed, so that's about all I got, Mayor.
Quiet. Regular Joe's a chain?
No.
Okay.
Alright. Item sixteen, public input, good seal.
Yes, sir.
Y'all got anything you wish to bring for the council?
Well, I just, um, at, at the last meeting, I believe, uh, I asked a couple of questions to the attorney, and if I'm not mistaken, I did ask a question in regards to the tax. Was it legal or not?
Yeah.
Um, for the tax to be, uh, for us to be taxed twice in the same year, and he said they're gonna get back with y'all.
I haven't found anything that would. Okay. Not unless you guys, because you don't have to say so, until the county. Provide you with the, the, um, the tax digest.
Right.
As approved by the state. So you guys could collect it anyway right now, so it's not you guys doing as much as it is the mouthpieces of the county commissioner.
That answered your question there.
I mean, we're still gonna get two tax weeks. We could, you gotta pay, you tax us for the year that you just paid. Didn't pay for the next year's taxes. Either way, I mean, you know, if you stay in the house two years, you gotta pay tax two years, whether it's all in one time or whatever.
Well, I understand, but, um, again, the question was asked, and.
Yeah.
I just wanted to know what the curbs are, what the outcome.
I mean, that's me, cause fixed income people, that's all.
I'm not, I'm not, see, I just wanted to know what the outcome is. Um, and, and I wanna say to the council, the councils, I think it's easel, is it?
Council who?
Mister Easter.
I can't even see it, I turned it up.
I'm sorry.
Good point, I, I appreciate that, good point, on your point that you made.
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Good point that you made on the Board of Ed Education, a good point that you made there, I appreciate that.
Good point on the school board.
Good, good, I appreciate that.
That's what we're talking about, right?
Yes, I was, thank you, thanks for putting that information out on the twenty first of January.
I didn't really think I was the only one, I'm just glad to hear it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate that, and we're gonna do everything we can to try to do our best to help citizens here.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate everything you do there.
That's why I didn't want to throw you when I suggested earlier. To set it right where it's at now, because we can call a call meeting as soon as we get those official numbers back. And it will tell us what we need to know then, and we can adjust on.
Yes, sir, no, I'm, I'm, I understand that, I, I, I don't know about everybody else, I agree with that, myself, I agree with that, myself.
And I know this council well enough to know they wanna do everything they can to help our citizens.
And I think we get that feeling as well, me and my wife.
We, this council here. Uh, and some of them turn on here a lot longer than the others has never. Your administration went up on taxes.
As a matter of fact, as a matter of fact, if you were to look at the, uh, digest that we've got, we've actually gone down. Four times in the past five years. Sometimes more than others, but we were at eleven mils, we're now at, uh, nine mils, and. In all truthfulness, in all likelihood, and this is not a promise or a guarantee, uh, when the final numbers come back from Atlanta. We will probably be collecting less than we did last year for city taxes. Can't do anything about the county or the school board, but we can do about the Sycamore taxes.
Oh, yeah, yes.
We wanna help the folks, not hurt them.
Plus municipal government is not a for-profit endeavor.
No, it's not, not supposed to be either.
It's not Sycamore George Incorporated.
Not even in the L O C.
Despite the fact it is incorporated.
You will be having.
Please, please just keep an eye on the wire grass, uh, homepage, keep an eye on our door, cause sometimes, you know. We have a call meeting and we'll post it on the door. The, our meetings are public.
Yes.
Coming here, you can address this council at any time about any issue. And, uh, that's why I put, you've got some municipalities in this county, I ain't gonna call no names. Uh, I done called enough tonight, but, uh. They. Will tell you, if you ain't got your name on the agenda, you ain't gonna speak.
Yep.
That is bull rot. Because that's why I put public input on every one of ours, because you have the right to question your local government.
You pay for the rights.
Exactly. And you don't need your name on this agenda here to be able to speak.
Well, could I ask something, if you don't mind, sir? I, I, I do totally agree with that, I, I was at a meeting, I, I spoke at that meeting, and, um, every, every.
Yeah.
Every city council meeting, yes, we carded, and, uh.
Actually, we appreciate you coming to speak.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Even if it's something we don't like to hear, we need to hear from our folks.
Yes, and, and we do go to the, to the videos, and we log them and review them.
None.
Try to get information, every video that should be put up, we try to look at them and get education, we might miss some, we try to get edu- education. And if they're not there, we can't get the education, but if they're there, we try to get the education and go back and, uh, review them and see what we can do better and ask questions and. If that's not happening, council members or helping ourselves, then, uh, you know, everybody needs to be able to see what's going on.
There's an old saying in the Georgia Municipal Association, you're always gonna get complaints about garbage pickup and dogs and cats running through people's yards. If the only thing people are complaining about is garbage pickup and dogs and cats running through the yard, you're doing something right, keep doing what you're doing. It's when we find out something we're not doing, that's what we need to hear.
And definitely, come speak your mind. We love to hear from our citizens, my phone is available twenty four seven, and trust me, I get calls sometimes up at ten, eleven at night. You know, but that's what y'all put me in office for. And I don't mind getting the calls, I want to know if there's something that needs to be handled, I, you know, I may not be aware of it. Of that need going on, but I want to fix that, you know, that's what I wanna do. So please, keep coming, whatever, you know, feel free to call me, my. Card, I have them out here when you come in and pay water bill, and my phone number's on it, my cell phone number's on it. And real advice for me, I answer myself on rent rates. So. We appreciate you, we really do. Alright, anybody else got anything?
Sheen, Ben.
Yes, ma'am.
How the speed bumps working?
They're working great. We've, uh, we've had to post up around town a little bit to remind people to go over them and not around them, but. But the neighborhoods stopping and talking to the residents have said that the traffic's been a tremendous amount slower coming by our houses.
Yes, amazing, what happens when you get airborne?
I, I, like I said, I've had to make a few contacts and. Put a few people on the side of the road and remind them to go over them, not around them, but, you know, that, that's not happening here as much either. But, I mean, we kinda figured that, that would happen from time to time, but. Everyone I've talked to that live on one of the streets, um. Has said they've seen a great decrease in.
I just feel like I've noticed less cars in general choosing to come down Matty or railroad.
And that, it, that may be possible, because, you know, if you come out of Ashland, off Cannon Road, hit Judd Marks and come down, it's kinda back way into, and that's the people which is flying through there. Um, so I'm sure it's, I'm sure it stops some of that. But. I think, I think they're doing, doing good for what they were intended for.
Are you complaining about my building way better?
No, it's quieter.
Alright, item seventeen.
Move to pay bills.
Second.
Take a second, all in favor?
Move to home.
Move to home.
All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned.